I just wonder if you guys all take over here today.
Tins of these.
Exactly. Oh, this is, um, thanks. I'll put this in.
Are you sure? Don't put it in your stuff?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna print it in a secret account, right?
Did I miss some minutes from the previous council meeting in the past?
Are they, they're not in there?
I'm not in this one. I don't know.
Let me...
Usually they're like right at the beginning and then I do.
Yeah, we got it. Two minutes. Let me...
Yep, I don't have any.
All right, all right.
No, you're fine. Talk about dramatic.
Can you read the comments?
I love it. I, 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 I'm here for the comment. A hundred percent.
They're good. It's like a, like a good Twitter feed.
Let me hear it. All right, I have to stop. We'll call the meeting order.
Household Division, due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming to the meeting. We'll have them do roll call. Deb?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended?
Go move.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Um, number 13, is that supposed to be blank?
There's not supposed to be a number 13.
Okay, I just want to double check.
Ever.
Ever. I was just there to remind you. Friday, the 13th pledge, Friday. Yeah.
All right, we'll go vote. Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
All right, comes out the agenda.
Right, and on the claims, they've been double looked at, Deb and myself, as well.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, like, I know we had discussed this priorly. We had gotten a report from the police.
Yeah.
Is that something we're gonna continuously get once a month?
Yes.
And when will that start? And will that be in the consent, consent agenda?
Um, it'll, it'll either be in the report section, like, if there's something to talk about, or consent, or you'll be able to move it off. Um, it's, uh, it's been a busy couple of weeks in that regard, so it'll be in the next meeting, for sure.
Okay.
And it'll be in probably the second meeting of the month, uh, moving forward, so that way we have time to compile our last month's numbers.
And, um, the library minutes the past, like, has that been taken care of? And how are they gonna not let that happen again?
Oh, in terms of, like, the...
I know it was back in the way back in October, but...
Yeah, that's, that's an ongoing, moving sort of target, um, and so there's just been a lot of discussion about, like, what are the types of things that can be stored in those rooms and whatnot, but yeah, the, the, uh, WASPs have been sprayed for and apparently eradicated. Uh, that's good. There's been a massive cleanup there. Uh, we haven't been invited to do the follow-up yet. I've been there a couple of times, uh, just for a cursory look around, answer some questions. So, um, it's, we're trying not to get into that problem moving forward, and so, uh, you know, just instituting a little higher degree of cleanliness over there and staying on top of the storage game is just gonna be necessary to make sure we don't fall into that thing.
Last question, is the insurance clean? What's that about?
I can't talk about that. In a public meeting, we can, uh, I can talk about it, um, one-on-one, um, just because of, like, privacy issues, so I can give you an update on that later, but I, I can't say names on the public record at this point. Yeah.
One second. I made a motion.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Yeah, motion. One second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Thanks.
Deb?
Yes.
All right. Updates and presentations. Number eight, update on the city pool data.
Okay, so you've, you've all seen the, uh, we asked for public engagement and feedback on the pool, so we asked for it. We designed a, uh, um, a survey that did its best to eliminate confirmation bias and all the things that could skew data. Um, and so there's a summary. I can, uh, go through these graphs quickly, and then we can talk a little bit about, um, some of the feedback and, and where, where I think we're at with it. Um, we had, uh, three hundred and four responses. There were about three hundred and forty responses, but in the survey, we, um, looked for IP address to make sure that there's not, like, one person, like, repeating, you know, that feedback, so, uh, we scrubbed, um, some of the data. We deleted some that were, um, that just had comments that were absolutely outrageous and, uh, not fit for a public meeting. Um, you know, and that were obviously just meant to instigate. So, um, after cleaning all of that out, uh, where we're at with the three hundred and four responses, um, I thought what was interesting is, like, about a little more than half the people who responded either never used the pool or used it one or two times, uh, and then the other half were prolific users, so that was, um, it was a really interesting dynamic in the data. Um, but it also shows that people, even if they don't use an amenity, they may still think that it's important for a community, so I don't wanna discount that completely. Um, most people do not have a seasonal pool pass who, who responded. This could be looked at as a growth area, you know, something that we can do a little bit better in trying to get people to, uh, get a pool pass.
Did we offer them last year?
Uh, we did, and then we didn't. Like, originally, we were going to, and then when we saw that we were gonna have scheduling issues and we couldn't get enough lifeguards to be open all the time, then we just quit selling them and refunded the few that, that we did sell. So that, you know, moving forward, whatever the council decides on this, we'll, you know, use these data as, you know, inspiration to try to get a lot more pool passes sold.
And not having them available at Christmas time, I think, is a disturbance to us, because I think people were buying for Christmas presents.
That's a really good idea that we had not thought of. Um, so, this, the next one is a graph of, like, uh, if, uh, what are the reasons that you don't use the pool more often? Um, and you'll see, like, uh, the number, you know, one is other. These are, you know, people would put in funny comments about why they can't use the pool, or, you know, so on and so forth, but a lot of various reasons. The number two is, uh, schedule conflicts with open hours, um, lack of time, not interested in swimming are, are the biggest ones. Um, and, uh, you know, the schedule conflicts were, were a standout in, you know, why people don't use the pool that often. Um, a little more than half the people thought that, uh, keeping the pool, uh, is very important to the community. Um, another, let's say twenty percent of that pie is somewhat important, um, and about a third of people thought that it was either not important at all or, or not very important. So, um, you know, you can, you can make assumptions on these data. You know, people have kids, uh, people who stayed here and grew up here and have fond memories of the pool, like, you know, those are things that, that make people, uh, you know, uh, think that the amenity is, is very important. Um, but pretty interesting distribution across the board. Um, so the seventy thousand dollars in addition to what we bring in, you know, in terms of sales, uh, requiring, you know, that support from taxpayers, I would say that there was a pretty aggressive yes over no, um, in regards to whether or not people were willing to, uh, pay for this through property taxes. You know, one of the things that we looked at, you know, in this year, you know, in trying to save money, you know, our salaries were lower, our hourlies were lower for our lifeguards, so it was really hard to hire lifeguards. It was really hard to hire manager. As such, like, with that mentality of, like, keeping those costs down as much as possible, um, you know, it really sort of hurt us. So this, to me, suggests that, uh, if the pool stays as an amenity, that people in general are, are willing to see a little higher property tax to, uh, to pay for it, and so that was encouraging, because I've seen these things in the past where everybody's, like, gung ho about, yes, we need this, we need this, and then ninety percent are like, but we don't wanna pay for it. Um, here, the, the people claiming that they're, you know, willing to support it, uh, is consistent with the other feedback.
That's exciting to me. Like, I like to see that.
Yeah, I, I, I thought it gave a lot of integrity to the data as well. You know, it's, it's, you weren't just people just complaining. They were, um, you know, they, they recognized the issue and, uh, you know, with the pro forma for next year, uh, looking a lot different and, uh, paying a little bit more for lifeguards and management, um, guaranteeing hours so that we can tell people we're going to be open regardless of, of usage. Um, all of these things are necessary for the pool, in my opinion, to be successful if the council decides to, to keep it. Um, the rest of these pages are feedback. Sorry, so there was a lot of feedback, a lot of comments. Like I said, I deleted some of them that were inappropriate. Um, other ones, I thought were good, you know, food for thought. Um, you know, people thought of different things, like, uh, like a golf practice or miniature golf. Uh, dog park was something that we saw as a recurring theme here, as, as if the council were to replace the pool, um, you know, what could we replace it with? Uh, picnic area was a big one. Uh, leave the splash pad and close the pool was a big one, um, that, that occurred, and then a lot of other really interesting ideas. I would say most of them unfeasible, but interesting nonetheless. So, uh, we don't, we're not gonna actually, like, vote on the pool tonight, but I wanna get direction, um, at least some feedback from council members on these data, if there's any questions or comments, uh, so that I can go back to staff and we can put a package together for the next year. Uh, or if there's consensus to not see the pool next year, uh, then, you know, we would put together a different package and, uh, you know, alter the, the budget, which we're now starting to work out. So, uh, any questions or comments, feedback on, on any of this stuff? I know it's a lot of comments to read.
I think it was good feedback, most of it. I think that I, I guess personally would like to see us give it a shot. You know, maybe if we could get, like, a group together that would wanna do some events or something down there, you know, before we just pull the pool out.
Yeah, there's, uh, you know, in, in internal talks with staff, you know, we've really come to the conclusion that not being able to hire people has been the major thing, and so in the pro forma for next year, you know, we're paying a substantially higher dollar amount for lifeguards, and we're going to start promoting it, like, in February, uh, to try to get lifeguards on board, and, you know, maybe if they have a choice of where they're working, they may wanna choose here now. Um, so if we do go ahead, the pro forma for next year is very aggressive. Uh, it will guarantee hours for the lifeguards so that they're motivated to apply here and to, to work here, and it'll be risky on our part, right? Like, we're risking a lot of money. Um, but a lot of people seem to think that if we have standard open hours, uh, if we have consistent, uh, lifeguard staff where we don't have to close for legal reasons, because we don't have the support, uh, that the pool could be successful. Uh, other people think that we have a dwindling number of young people in town, and for that reason, the pool won't be that successful. Um, but I, I'm of the, we have to see it with our own eyes to absolutely know, and I think to your earlier point, uh, at another meeting, if we're going to do it, we have to do it the right way in order to know that the results are real. And so that's kind of why we're putting so much time and effort into thinking about this.
And I think if it's a goal, everybody has to be on a positive step forward.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, all staff, all, like, we all have to support it and make it a goal.
Totally agree. Yeah.
But then on the side that it takes time to get the pool prepped, and then I think everybody would have to be on board by at least higher by, what, May or the middle of May, because we want it open for Scrubbery Day.
Right.
Using Memorial Day as day one.
Yeah.
So, and then make sure, because I think we ran into the problem where they still had to go and get their lifeguard training.
Yeah.
And certification, so...
And putting it out in February, you know, wouldn't we get us ahead of the ballgame?
Yeah.
When my son was like, already picked it up at Prairie, which is an indoor pool, so they could get down and do the thing.
Right, and we could provide those options, like, we look into it, we say, hey, you can go here, you can go here, you can go here.
Yeah.
We pay for that, and it's regardless, right?
Correct. Yeah. So, and then we thought the other, the other thing that we could do is bring a package to the council that, that basically says, you know, if we don't get a full roster of twelve lifeguards, you know, if we get ten, we'll be open six days. If we get eight, we're gonna be open five days. You know, like, we, we won't be able to, obviously, if we only had four lifeguards, they're not gonna work open and close every day, you know, so, um, and then, uh, we'll sort of create an algorithm there that just basically, or a flow chart that says, however many we get, this is how many days we can be open with that load. Um, and if we don't get, you know, more than eight, then, you know, we shouldn't even open at all. Like, we're just, you know, we're, if we only had eight, we're going to be closed most of the time, like, just...
Well, and oddly enough, when my kids have worked there, when I've been there, weekends are not a hotspot. It's Monday through Friday are the, the days when the highest numbers are there.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can totally work on what those days are with the flow chart, and, yeah, we were thinking, like, you know, Sun, there's Sunday and Saturday first, but Monday through Friday makes sense as busy days, you know, people are working, and, you know, it's a nice place to go during the day, it's, you know, there's... Uh, so we can work all that out. I just, tonight, I wanna get the consensus on, um, you know, if we're gonna take a shot at it, or if we want to, um, think otherwise.
I think we definitely need to take the shot at it.
Okay.
I know it's been difficult, but I think our hands have been tied in some areas with wages that we've been paying.
Yeah.
This really hurt, I think.
Yeah, and, and I, I think that's why we wanted to go to the public with this, share with transparency, like, how much it costs to have a full load of people and see if people are, if that's something that, that, you know, the people are generally willing to support with property tax dollars, and, you know, and, and there seems to be some support there, so... Um, yeah, and we, and we had a lot of responses, you know, three hundred and four honest responses from a city with, you know, eleven hundred, twelve hundred people in it. Like, that's a really good cross-section of the community, so I feel like everybody kinda knows about it, you know, and, uh, I know most households only put in, like, one, one return as well. You know, there were, there were many who called up and said, should each of us in the household put a return? I said, it's completely up to you, you know, but most people that called just put in one, so... So this three hundred represents probably four to four hundred and fifty people.
Yeah, the kids, kids need something to do in the summer.
Yeah. All right, so general consensus, uh, without taking a vote, we're gonna propose...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll put together a package that says this is how we're gonna promote it, the dates, the flow, everything. We'll have that ready for the next meeting. Great. All right, next one is, um, an update on the electric utility and gen plant. Uh, so we had a meeting, no, it's a little bit, um, we had a meeting last week, you know, as we've looked at the electric business, um, you know, our rates haven't increased in over a decade. Uh, we mitigated that several meetings ago, um, by raising the base rate and, you know, and the, the hourly rates, um, a little bit. Uh, that is going to fill, you know, much of the hole that, that we've been losing, and, you know, we talked about putting another rate increase in six months after the initial one, um, and that should bring us up to at least neutrality, maybe a little bit of profitability. Uh, with that said, we have some pretty substantial capital improvements, costs. Um, we have some upgrade costs at the gen plant that are just north of, like, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to upgrade, uh, some of the electrical there. That has to be factored into our profitability and lost pro forma for next year, um, and, uh, you know, and then ongoing costs. So, uh, we had a meeting with Ellen McKee Clayton and Dairyland, uh, in the back room, and our staff was here, and it was just to get information, introduce each other. Um, I know that several years ago, we had an offer from them to purchase the electric business altogether from us, including the gen plant. Um, I don't know where that went. It's, like, details are a little, a little gray, um, but I just wanted to have a meeting with them, um, just be transparent with them that as we're looking at, uh, the future and we're looking at the electric business, we wanted to know what all of our options were in terms of staying in the business and, you know, making our rates competitive, uh, you know, closing that budget hole, turning it to profitability, or if they were interested in, um, you know, renegotiating an offer for the entire electric business. So, again, it was just an introductory meeting to get some information, you know, no promises, no, uh, direction at that meeting, other than, you know, just letting them know that we're open to having a discussion, uh, about their interest in our electric business, and, um, and also, uh, that meeting went pretty well. I don't know, Ellen, if you wanna add anything, like, you were there. Do you have any other?
Not too much. I know that, I know that you had some concern, um, since you voted, you voted to raise the facilities charge from six dollars to sixteen dollars, and that's perfect, just one ticket, um, and you, you were concerned about what the customer would be paying. Uh, Ellen McKee Clayton customers paid thirty-nine dollars a month at this time, and Holly indicated, Holly, the, the director, she indicated that they were in the process of only fifty-five dollars a month for facilities charges. So, we are still a long, long way. Even, even if we go another ten dollars, it'd be at twenty-six dollars. We will be very low yet on, and obviously, they put those charges in there realizing that that's what it takes to be profitable. And they actually, the, the one guy actually looked at our different rate schedules, and he said that a couple of our rate schedules are just slightly higher than what they, they have. So, we're right in line with the actual rates, but we're, we're still quite low on the facilities charge. Uh, another ten dollars is, is a must to, to, to go on that, um, for sure.
Yeah, and that I totally agree with. Like, for us to be, you know, like, our risk-to-reward profile is so out of whack, you know, like, we're taking all the risk and we're losing money yet, and so with that next ten-dollar hike that we'll talk about in a few months, um, you know, that will bring us to a neutrality. Um, but again, that won't maintain profitability. You know, we're gonna have to stay on top of those rates every year. And then my other concern was, you know, as the bills get higher, you know, there's a lever, right? Like, the higher the bill is, the less some people are able to pay for it. Um, and I know that, you know, we have a lot of assistance for, for folks, and that's great, um, but there is at some point, um, an ethical question about being people's government and also selling them a product that many have a hard time paying for. Um, and so that's something that, you know, I think should be involved in the discussion. I'm not saying that that should preclude us from being in the electric business, but at some point, like, you know, we have people coming in that we're having to negotiate with to, uh, pay their bills over time. Um, you know, there's, it's just, we're going to be carrying more and more debt, uh, in that business, the higher the rates go. Like, that's just inevitable. Um, so I wanna make sure that we factor that also into our rate increases over time, so that we can afford to carry that load and not have to go into actual debt to cover, uh, you know, utilities debt. So, lots of complicated, you know, moving parts there, but, um, I was encouraged. They, they seemed interested to move forward just with talks about, um, with their teams to see if they're still interested in making an offer, um, and also very interested in working with us to make sure that, that we're profitable should we decide to keep, you know, keep that business. So, I was really encouraged by the meeting. It went really well. Um, they were, uh, you know, very helpful, and, uh, anything else to, you've thought, any other takeaways? So, again, nothing to decide tonight. I'm just giving you an update, you know, 'cause that, that was an important meeting, and I just wanted to give an update on, uh, sort of, you know, the details of that meeting and why we had it. All right, um, next is the holiday light rebate participation. We, um, we put an online form. That's going really well, so we've got, uh, sign-ups here. People come in. There's sign-up in the newspaper, so we're getting mail. So, at, right now, we're at fifty-five people that have signed up for it, and they're still coming in, a couple a day, and a couple of them listed an enormous amount of lights, so, uh, looking forward to driving around town and...
I just took a look the other night, and that's what is killing it, man.
Yeah, yeah. And one person was very specific, so they're gonna put out, like, five hundred and nine lights, like, seems like an awfully specific amount of lights, so...
That online form was really handy. That was really quick and easy, and that was my...
Yeah, good, good. Um, so, yeah, so maybe encourage others, you know, like, I, I know that there's more than fifty-something houses with lights out, so, uh, we'll do another social media push to try to get as many people, uh, that rebate as possible, you know, give a little back.
Cool.
All right. All right, back to you.
All right, go ahead to new business. Number eleven, resolution twenty-four forty-nine on the Civic Center Public Use Policy Week.
All right, uh, motion in a second.
Make a motion.
Second. Motion second.
All right, so this, uh, we've been working on this. This is started from the basketball players that wanna use the Civic Center, uh, so tonight, we have the resolution, uh, allowing that. Um, we created a Civic Center Public Use Policy, um, and then we have a, a signup form, and, uh, we're gonna guess the available times from the daycare, uh, like, on a monthly basis. They might change a little bit depending on what's going on there. So, we're just gonna create a calendar. We'll probably put the calendar online, and, uh, that way people know, like, these are the blocked-off times, and then we'll, um, also have this form in paper, and we'll also have this form in a digital... And then, we'll also have this form in paper, and we'll also have this form in a digital format, so people can use the form online, just like we did with the Holiday Light Rebate Program, and reserve the gym, and then, once they do that, then we'll get automatic notifications that somebody has reserved it, and, you know, we'll arrange with them to move the keys.
Any other question? Now, we'll go to vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Number twelve, Resolution Twenty-four Fifty-One, reappointing Mike Tucker to the Upper Square Land Regional Standing Commission Regional Housing Authority Board for a three-year term.
I still move for Resolution Twenty-four Fifty-One to reappoint Mike Tucker.
One second. Motion second.
Great, so this is a three-year term. I understand that Mr. Tucker is already in that role. I don't know Mr. Tucker, but looked him up, seems to, you know, check all the boxes, you know, we get minutes. And he sent an email saying that if nobody else wanted to take on this role, that he'd be happy to serve another three-year term. So, this, last time was just done by motion, but per our protocols, like, all appointments for outside boards should be done by resolution. So, that's why it's changing from just a motion to a resolution. And I, if I, if you had any questions on Mr. Tucker, I would not be able to answer that. I don't, I haven't met him.
In fact, most of us know him, so it's a good go ahead for him.
Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Megan?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Great.
All right, and the other business?
The only other business is that the, the regular scheduled meeting of the month for next week, or next month will be New Year's. So, we're just going to roll into the third meeting, which will be the first meeting of that month for us. But I will say, maybe just gray out that second Wednesday of January, in case something important comes up and we need to have an impromptu meeting. I would say like, just kind of keep it in the back of your mind, maybe we'll use that if we need it. Other than that, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to you all, and Happy New Year.
Very Merry Christmas was fantastic.
Oh, great.
That was, that, the Civic Center looked happen.
That's great.
And the lighting, the Christmas tree lighting was a really cool event, too. So, whoever had a part in it, like, thank you, good job.
I'll extend those, thanks, definitely.
I just have a question on approving another council member.
Sure.
Are we going to put that on the agenda, or what are your thoughts on that moving forward?
I think we'll probably, I'll probably speak with each of you in the next week or two, just about like, how many people have shown interest. There's some discussion going on. There's like, one or two, there's one candidate that has already kind of stepped up, and then one or two others that are interested in going on. And then, I know that there's been some rumor going around that is unfounded and completely untrue. So, if you hear like, you know, no, just, there's, as you all know, it's a small, small city, and people say stuff. Like, right now, we have one credible applicant, and likely to have one or two other credible applicants.
I just want to make sure that they're on board before we start doing the budget process, because I feel like that's something important for them to be involved in. So, I don't...
Yeah.
Sooner or later, I think, is my opinion.
Yeah.
I don't know when you plan on starting doing some of those budget meetings.
So, the, so the, internally, we've been working on the budget pretty heavily with the capital improvement planning. So, each department has now completed the capital improvement planning, which includes estimates, actual hard costs moving forward on needs and wants. And so, over the break, I'll be compiling it and putting it all into a spreadsheet. So, we've started internally, working on it, to try to make your jobs during the budget season a little bit easier than maybe how it's been done in the past. But, yeah, starting in January, we need to start working on it. So, we'll probably have to start the budget process before somebody gets appointed, because we will be working on it internally in January. And then, just today, we got the email from the state. You know, the, the budget process has changed a little bit. And so, a couple of weeks ago, I was in a budget process seminar all day, and that was very fruitful. And then, we just got the package today with all the instructions and all the forms that the state wants us to do. So, we'll spend the next week going through those instructions, going through those forms, finding out what's different, before we start presenting to you, because what I don't want to do is present to you the way that we did last year, and then find out that we have to change all the forms and all the, you know, I want to make sure that we do it the way the state wants us to do it from the get-go, because that transfer math is not fun. So, so, to make a long answer even longer, we'll, we'll probably have to start before somebody gets appointed. And just based on conversations I'll have with each of you between now and the first meeting that we have in January, maybe somebody, you know, could be ready for an appointment at that meeting and be there for the get-go. So, just a lot of moving parts, and then I don't want to commit to something that might fall apart if I say it.
Anything else?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, I'm going to have you sign this one, so that we can get that to the appropriance.
Well, like, what is, what's the date? I'm always like, I just need to get to the twenty-first, where these things start getting longer. I'm waiting for time, and I'm waiting for life to my life.